We can start the meeting if he shows up, he shows up. Okay, I'll call the Tremont Planning Board Meeting of January 11th to order at 6:01 PM. Roll call, Brett Witham?
Here.
Jeff Young?
Here.
Beth Goddard?
Here.
You're back, okay. And myself, Mark Good. Lawson Wilson?
I'm here.
Oh, you are here.
Yep.
Where are you?
Here, in all senses of the word.
Okay, great, great. And we have CEO John Larson, as well as, I believe I saw our town manager as well, Jesse Dunbar. Okay, everybody's here, so let's move right on. Any reason to adjust the agenda that anybody can see?
Yes, Mark, I would suggest we adjust the agenda to move the discussion about the board, the public hearing, right after public hearing and not after the the decision to talk about Pointy Head.
I believe Pointy Head is going to be tabled, so.
I still would suggest we move it so we don't have to table that and then go to that next, so we keep the agenda in the order that's logical.
There a motion to that effect?
I so moved.
And just to understand, Jeff, you're suggesting that we talk about Pointy Head before the public hearing?
No. Under number seven, old business, Pointy Heads first, and then Discussion of Amendments to Sections Land Use that Pertain to Campgrounds. I think that section of that should go up right underneath the public hearing.
So you're saying within Section Seven, Old Business, switching the Site Plan and Review application?
Yeah.
With the discussion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion, now that I understand it.
Okay, a motion is second on the table, any discussion? I don't see a reason to do this, and I'll say why. We all got an email from the attorney Diane today saying she doesn't have the opinion for us and that we should table that discussion. If we do that, that's like a two-minute discussion at all, to table it. And it keeps anybody that's here for Pointy Head from hanging around unnecessarily. That's my.
I agree. I would move, I would just move to table that right after the minutes.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the table, so we need to deal with that first. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, or I shouldn't say that. Jeff, are you in favor?
Yes.
Lawson?
No.
Brett?
No.
Beth?
No.
Myself, no. Okay.
I'll make a motion to move Old Business Discussion about Pointy Head and on amendments to Sections of the Land Use Ordinance that Pertain to Campground, to move that conversation to after Section Five, Discussion of the Minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second on the table to move Discussion of Amendments to the Campground Ordinance or Section of the Ordinance to right after the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Mark, what did you just say the amendment was? The motion was?
The motion was to move Discussion on the, was it Pointy Head? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Pointy Head to right after the minutes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Brett?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, let's go to the minutes. I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Yeah, that's a bit of.
Okay, motion is second on the table to approve the minutes of December 14th. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. We no longer have Jan Sprague doing our minutes as acting as Recording Secretary. Kate Coff, former Ellsworth American Reporter who does this for the Town of Bar Harbor and the Town of Mount Desert, I believe, is now going to be doing our minutes. So I just want to make people aware of that, and she won't be at the meeting, but she'll be watching the video afterwards. So I'll entertain a motion to thank Jan Sprague for her years of service as Recording Secretary for the Board.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion is second on the table to thank Jan Sprague for her years of service as Recording Secretary for the Board. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, Pointy Head.
I guess I'll just thank Kate Coff for jumping in and helping us out. She's not here, but she'll hear it. I will make a motion because then she'll have to write it, burn it out.
She's getting paid quite well, so don't worry about it.
That sounds great. As you should.
Okay. Pointy Head. Take a motion to table Discussion on this until we get an opinion from our attorney.
Yeah, I'm going to be table a Discussion on the Pointy Head Campground pending an opinion from our attorney on the matter.
Second.
Motion is second on the table to table Pointy Head's Site Plan Review Application until we get an opinion from our attorney on that matter. Any discussion?
Only a comment that I noticed an email went out from our CEO to the attorney representing that it was going to be tabled, and that's a little risky to send that out in case we don't table it. In the future, I think that should go out after we take the action and table it, not before we move on it.
Yep. I wonder about that same thing. Okay. Is that it? Any other discussion? If not, call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And I apologize to the applicant. This is beyond the control of the Planning Board here, so thank you. Okay, public hearing. I'll call the public hearing on changes or proposed possible changes on campground ordinance to the campground standards in the ordinance to order at 6:09. And John, were you going to say something? No? Okay. I know CTR, Concerned Tremont Residents, has been very involved in this, and I am hoping that they have a spokesperson, maybe that can speak up and tell us what they've been discussing and instead of each individual member, although that's allowed as well. Is there somebody that wants to speak for them?
Do you see Cindy's hand raised?
No, I don't. No, I do now, but I can't do anything. It's Mr. Larson's job.
Hi there. Is it okay to speak?
Yes, yes, okay.
Well, thank you for having this public hearing tonight. I think it's great to get the community together so we can all work together. As you know, we hosted that discussion forum on Thursday, and our goal is to have an inclusive meeting to ask questions and get feedback from members of the community. We're hoping to provide you with some information to assist you with your decision-making of the board. We had a great turnout. There was about 60 in attendance, and some of those in attendance were representing a household, so there were maybe like two people zooming in on one account for a few of those. Not all in attendance participated in the voting. And there were some new faces attending, which was great to see. There were people not associated with CTR and people who haven't seen attending previous planning board meetings. It was about half-seasonal and half-year-round residents. There were 10 questions that we asked, and the subject of those questions consisted of things like density requirements, site limits, minimum parcel size, campground, glamp ground definitions, and if people favored extending the moratorium. If the board will allow it, Terry Dewan is here tonight, and he's the expert in land use planning who developed the presentation and questions, and it would be really awesome if he would be permitted to give a review of the poll questions and findings that I sent to you guys on Friday. He can summarize things in a much more time-conscious and meaningful, efficient way than maybe myself and some of my other members. We got some really great, insightful, constructive feedback from people in the community, and we've come up with some suggestions for ways to move forward, and we'd love to be able to share that with you and other community members who weren't at the forum the other night.
Okay, I don't think we need to go over everything that happened at the meeting. We're just interested in the results and what recommendations you might want to make to us as of the board.
Right, that's exactly what Terry's prepared to do, if you would allow him to be the one to go over those.
Members, any objections to that?
No objections. For me.
Okay. Mr. Dewan, I guess you're on. Could you keep it brief, please? As brief as possible, how's that?
I'll try and do my best.
Thank you.
And I will, unfortunately, I'll have to read from a few notes here, so bear with me. A little bit about myself, I'm a landscape architect and land planner. Can all of you hear me okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yes, I say that advisedly. Somebody said at the beginning of this session that they're feeling sick. I'm in my seventh day of COVID quarantine right here, so.
Sorry to hear that. Yeah, if you could speak up a little or a little closer to the mic, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, how's that?
Better.
Okay, my practice is in Yarmouth, Maine, where I am very much involved in a wide variety of different things, including writing the design guidelines for communities, doing visual assessments, helping towns with park planning, subdivision design and so forth. On a personal level, I live and practice in New Gloucester, Maine, where I'm the chairman of the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee. We've been working on that project for the last four years, and we just got approval last week. COVID, as we all know, has had a great deal of effect on all of our lives. And one of the interesting things about it, if there is a silver lining, is the ability to reach out to people, as Cindy mentioned, and engage them in a community, design community and discussion process. And that's what we did last week. We had a series of questions that were shown to people. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the tapes from the meetings, but we use a program, part of Zoom, called Polling. We ask people a question. They were then able to respond anonymously, and we got tremendous results from it. So what we are going to be talking about tonight is the results of that type of engagement. A little bit of background. From our perspective, the main issue is addressing the potential for a significant number of transient visitors to Tremont and the effects that they may have on the town's character, public facilities and natural resources. That was the subject for the moratorium. As you probably know, there are now 232 approved sites for campgrounds and other types of recreational lodging in town.
Excuse me, Brett, were you going to say something?
I just, the way that that was just described, I kind of, I actually was curious how this was going to go, and so I looked at the actual language of the moratorium. Moratorium is actually about campgrounds. And I just, it just struck me that the way that you just said that was much broader than actually the moratorium speaks to. And I really want to make sure that what we're focused on is addressing campgrounds.
That's an excellent point, and we'll get to the whole topic, as Cindy said, about the definition of what campgrounds are in the land use ordinance.
Okay.
As we all know, there are properties that could be potentially utilized for campgrounds in the foreseeable future. With as available land, proximity to Acadia, the town character, it's inevitable that we will continue to see pressure for additional campgrounds and other recreational lodging in the future. The Conference of Plan Committee, which is working on an update to the plans, expected to deal with these underlying issues as it continues its work. Recommendations may be forthcoming in the next year. The community forum is very helpful in defining many of the interrelated issues that should be addressed as the town develops to the land use ordinance. It's clear from the discussion, the responses to the questions posed to the 60 or more participants and the written comments received that these questions will take some additional time and effort to arrive at ordinance changes that are right for Tremont. Looking at ways to regulate campgrounds, we examined four related questions. First of all, it was just mentioned definitions. Does the current definition of campgrounds still work? Number two, site selection and evaluation. How should the town determine the density under optimum number of sites in a property? Does the land use ordinance require an inadequate evaluation of individual properties? Thirdly, neighborhood impacts. Are the current standards adequate to protect the environmental resources of nearby properties and ensure compatibility? Community impact. How can the town determine when a saturation point has been reached? Now, in looking at what's going to propose changes, we feel that the changes should serve several purposes. First of all, they should provide the town with workable regulations. Secondly, clarify any ambiguity that may be present in the current ordinance. Thirdly, give the planning board and the Board of Selectmen clear metrics or tools to evaluate the development proposals in the futures as they come along. Fourth, to give a butter's and other property owners assurances that their properties will not be adversely affected by campgrounds or related developments. Fifth, give potential developers with unambiguous language that will inform them what the town's looking for and requires and the processes they will have to follow. Lastly, propose ordinance changes that should have no effect on traditional land uses within the RV zone. The whole question of definition then started when we took a look at how the town currently defines campgrounds. And the current definition does not include the various forms of temporary living quarters that may be offered. In fact, the ordinance uses the term or other shelters. We also know that there is a relatively new concept, glamping and glamp grounds, that seems to have taken off in the area back throughout the United States. There are aspects of glamp grounds that are similar to campgrounds, but there are also key differences the town may want to consider. The term recreational lodging, which I used before, may be a better way to define the type of uses we're discussing. In other words, transient lodging. And this term could include campgrounds, campsites, cabins, glamp grounds, yurts, covered wagons, RV parks, and others.
I think we kind of, as a board, I think we basically understand these things. Could you get to the point here? What are the things you're recommending? What is CTR recommending to us for suggestions on how to proceed?
Okay. Let me just paraphrase then some of the next sections. We looked at the site selection, looking at how the town would determine what land is suitable. Should there be minimum lot sizes for recreational lodging? Should there be a maximum number of sites and units? Is the current density standard of 5,000 square foot per unit appropriate for Tremont? And how should the ordinance be crafted? Are the site development standards in the land use ordinance adequate to protect budding properties? And are the standards adequate to protect environmental resources? And will the development be compatible with surrounding land uses? And then lastly, under community impact, is there a saturation point for additional campgrounds or recreational lodging units throughout the town? And if so, will it be determined by availability of water supply, capacity of town services, traffic generation, and other factors? So moving forward to get to your question, Mr. Good, there are several options for the town to deal with the issues that have been raised. In developing a workable approach, we would engage the community in a second community forum, using the polling questions that we've talked about already to test options.
Hold on a second. Hold on, you're saying you guys are going to do this?
We're suggesting that because the first go-rounds seem to produce a great deal of interest and a response from the community, once we, as a group, develop some of the options, we'd like to test those to the community at large.
That's fine, but what's the process here? The process is the planning board comes up with proposed standards. It then goes to the selectmen. The selectmen then either agree with those and put them on a warrant for a town meeting, and the voters approve. You guys are fine. You can do whatever you want. That's great, but and that has nothing to do with the planning board. If you, we have this public hearing here for you to weigh in and make suggestions about what we as a planning board should be thinking about, and I'm not hearing that.
I'm just about there. So we found that there are probably five different options that could happen at this point. First of all is to eliminate campgrounds as currently defined as an allowable use for the RV zone. And this option was selected by 72% of the participants in the community forum. Secondly, another option might be to eliminate recreational lodging as it may be defined as an allowable use. In other words, expanding the sense of what is meant by campgrounds. Thirdly is to allow certain types of recreational lodgings, for example cabins, with restrictions on the numbers or densities. A fourth option might be to allow various types of recreational lodging regulated by interim standards as outlined above that we're developing right now that deal with things like density, maximum numbers, buffers, onsite managers and so forth. May note that 24% of the forum participants agree that interim standards would be the preferred way, would be the preferred way moving forward. And then lastly, to do what I just mentioned, allowing types of recreational lodging with interim standards, but setting a cap on the number of units per year that could be developed town-wide or the maximum number of units on any one site. Just to wrap up, we would like to think that the work that we're doing can be provided to the Conference of Planning Committee using the results of its work by CTR to date to be done, and the additional work to be done once the moratorium is extended. We'd also like to think that we would, the town would reevaluate whether a decision is made regarding interim ordinance amendments when the Conference of Plan is updated and accepted by the town. So that is in a nutshell what we've been doing. As I mentioned, we are in the process of drafting language that could be inserted into the land use ordinance, but as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of options in terms of things like density or square footages or setbacks, and we'd like to have a way to engage the community. And we feel that the Zoom polling option was a success in terms of engaging the public, and it might be something very useful moving forward. Thank you very much.
You've been kicking around percentages. I believe Ms. Lawson did say, but I can't recall, how many people actually attended this community building, meeting?
We don't know the actual number, but there was, at one point, there were 62 people that were shown as participants. Although, as Cindy mentioned, looking at the screen, there was obviously a couple of couples that were joined together.
Okay, and how many were actual voters, registered voters in the town of Tremont?
I don't have that number right in front of me. Cindy might have that. We asked that question. We asked about part-time residents. We asked about the number of taxpayers in the community. I believe, I believe the information has been submitted to you already.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I believe that information has been submitted to you already.
I don't, I haven't received it.
Okay, I thought Cindy had said that that had been turned in.
Mark, I emailed that to all the planning board members and all the select board members and John and Jesse on Friday, and then I emailed it again on Saturday morning because the link that I first emailed didn't seem to be working correctly, so you should have that.
You emailed us a video of your community forum, correct?
And there was also two documents in there. There was the poll results and the there was also the record of the chat comments.
Okay, well.
So there were about, in the various questions, there was about 45 people participating in the voting. And so about 25 of those were seasonal, 25 were, were year-round, and not everybody participated in each question. Looking through.
Yeah, 53% of the people that answered the questions were Tremont residents. 87% of the people on the call were taxpayers in Tremont.
Again, you're talking percentages, not numbers, okay? You could have two people answering, that'd be 50%. I'm interested in numbers. I think Cindy, Cindy did explain that.
Yeah, so like, in our demographic question, we had, our first demographic question was where is your permanent residence? A total of 47 people answered that question, and 25 of those people said they were permanent residents of Tremont. Out of state, there were 17 people that were out of state. Other towns on MDI, there were three. Elsewhere in Maine, two. So that kind of gives you an idea of who was participating.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Mr. Dewan or Ms. Lawson?
Are you, you want over five different possible routes that we could look at as to possibilities of addressing campground? Are you going to furnish those and writing to us so we can have some material in front of us so we can study it and just not?
We, yes, we are working on that right now.
Yeah, I was a little disappointed that we didn't have anything in our packets, personally. And maybe before our next meeting, you could provide us with something. And that should be the Tuesday before the meeting, so Mr. Larson is able to get it in our packets.
Did you not receive the documents I sent to you or the recording?
I did get your email, yes, but I didn't watch it. You know, I feel that we scheduled this forum, this public hearing, back in November, and this is really the proper forum to address those things. I didn't feel that a need that that I had to watch that, and I was hoping that you folks could just explain tonight what you decided in that meeting, but it doesn't sound like you have any real clear-cut decisions. You're still working on this.
Well, we're trying to be respectful of your process as a board, and that we are community members, and you are the board, you are the decision-makers in this town, and we're not trying to take control of your process. We're trying.
No, it's the voters who are the decision-makers in the town in this process, yes.
Yeah, so this is, we're hoping that this is a collaborative effort, you know, I don't think, nobody's trying to take control of your process, and you know, we had our meeting on Thursday.
We're here to listen.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, you know, I want to hear your concerns and suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, we actually want some concrete suggestions, like like, do people want to, you know, what's your view? Do you want to eliminate campgrounds? And if not, you know, how do you want to address? You know, I heard, you know, things about, you know, neighborhood impact or impact on joining properties. In looking at our ordinance, how would you, what are your proposals to address that? I mean, I'm not hearing that. I think frankly, what I'm hearing is we have more work to do, so we want to, and it feels like what's going on here is we're looking for an extension to the moratorium, and this is kind of a way to, you know, just kind of head in that direction. I would have hoped, and I think I heard you in the grapevine that someone at one of these meetings had said that the planning board had been dragging their feet, and we're not moving on this thing. I mean, this was the opportunity for folks to come and tell us what they want. And kind of what we heard was a little bit about a meeting that took place, that's great, community involvement and meetings are awesome. That does not represent the public, you know, that these are, this forum here is where the public provides their input, and we're not actually getting any.
So respectfully, though, Mr. Witham, we are the public, and the public held a community forum, and we sent those records to you. And if you had looked at the polling results, you would have seen that one of our questions was what should be the recommendation to the planning board and Board of Selectmen? Prohibit campgrounds and glamp grounds altogether? 36 people, which represented 72% of the participants, said that they would prohibit the, want to prohibit campgrounds and glamp grounds.
So is that what you want to do? So, is that what you want to do?
Adopting interim standards, twelve people, twenty-four percent said that. Keep the land use ordinance unchanged, uh, two people said that, that represented four percent. So, I, I think that, like, our forum the other night, this hearing tonight, they're, they're first steps, you know, we, you're still getting the, the input of all the community, you know?
But you're, you're getting input of the folks that went to that meeting, which are going to tend to be sort of like-minded, so I get that. And, you know, as, as Mark had said, you know, I'm not going to go through, you know, an hour presentation and try to sift through and figure out the data in a meeting that's not actually a public forum, that's something that's, that's a, some sort of other process that, that folks are doing. That's great, I think it's great for people to coordinate, but then what we're hoping to get here is, you know, boil that down into concrete, like, actual language or actual proposals and say, this is what we want to do.
Right, right, and we're working on that.
Okay, so you're still, okay, so I, I did.
We're still working on that, yeah.
Okay.
You don't have any, to what?
Wait, wait, wait. Did you hear Cindy just say that thirty-six people voted that, you know, like, said that they want a, a moratorium? I mean, that's one of the things that I heard Cindy say, like, that's a recommendation that thirty-six people made.
To eliminate camp.
So, that they, they wanted the moratorium, they, they extended?
Thirty-six people said they want to eliminate campgrounds.
Okay, to eliminate campgrounds.
Yeah, and then people, ninety-eight percent of people, let's see, we asked that question too, forty-five people said they want to extend the moratorium. You know, what's interesting about our questions, they kind of mirrored your results in the town survey that you guys administered, the comprehensive task force. You know, I, I, it's interesting seeing that, and sixty participants coming to our community forum, and then tonight we have sixty participants in your planning board meeting. I, I, I think that that is a good representation of the community. You know, we, we can only do so much as community members, we need our, we need our, our town to work with us, we're trying to work together with you, and we're not going to make, we're not going to come up with changes in one night or just in a couple nights of meetings. This is a long, this is a, to come up with meaningful ordinance changes, it's, it's going to be more than just tonight, coming up with something.
We, we understand, I mean, we, we face the, the same issue, okay? And as far as extending the moratorium is concerned, we have nothing to do with that. That's up to the selectmen.
Well, M- M- Mark, I wouldn't say we have nothing to do with it, I think we can move to recommend to the selectmen that the moratorium be extended, so they had to realize that we're working on it, and it, we consent to or suggest it be extended. So, I wouldn't say we have nothing to do, I think we have a lot to do.
Well, maybe that, that's true, we could make a recommendation, but they're, the ultimate decision is theirs.
Correct, but they're not going to make it in the vacuum, they, they wouldn't want to make it in the vacuum, I think they want, look to us for some advice, and we might want to go forward with that recommendation.
I think what they're looking for is, uh, some concrete steps that we're taking towards that goal, and hopefully we'll be able to, uh, have some of those, uh, when we discuss it la- later on in this meeting amongst ourselves. So, anyway, uh, public hearing here. Concerned Tremont residents, or there anything else? Cindy, uh, is there anything else you want to say right now?
Um, well, Richard Spencer has his hand up, and, and it would be great if you'd let him speak for a moment, and then I, I, there's a, we don't want to take up every, there's a lot of people here who want to speak tonight, and they should have the time to speak, so.
Exactly, okay.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, um, my name is, is Dick Spencer, and because Terry Dewan was flat on his back with COVID, I ended up actually moderating the, the community forum. And I think it might be helpful for me just to, to quickly talk to you about some of the specifics that came up at the community forum in terms of what the people there, what the people there voted that they, they wanted the town to do, because it's what you're asking for. But the caution, I would say, is that that was just the first opportunity for people to give input to CTR, so, and that was just a couple of days ago, so CTR hasn't had a chance to evaluate all of those responses. The things that what struck me most were that of the people who participated, and I would grant that, you know, it's not a, a broadly representative group of the community, it was only forty-five people, about half of whom were year-round residents, and about half of whom were taxpayers. More than eighty percent, and I think it was in the ninety percents, said that they thought that the town needed a new definition of campgrounds because of the confusion over what's a campground, what's a cabin, what's a residential facility? All of those things are all overlapping in the ordinance, and it seems very confusing. So, there was a unanimous feeling that there needed to be a, a new definition that dealt with, with recreational visitors to Tremont. The second question that struck me was that, um, when people were asked what they thought the minimum site area should be for a campground, there was some division, a more or less equal division among the people who were responding, saying that they thought that the minimum site, that there should be a minimum site area for a campground, and it, it broke down fairly evenly between five acres, ten acres, and twenty acres. So, so there was almost unanimous feeling that there should be a minimum site size, but it was, but there was quite a divergence of views as to whether it should be five, ten, or twenty acres. The other, the second question that was striking was that the question was asked whether, whether the current five thousand square foot area for campsites should be continued, and I think only a couple of, only a few people said yes, and the respondents broke down again somewhat divided between whether it should be, I think the numbers were fifteen thousand or thirty thousand or forty thousand square feet for a, for a unit that basically is a lodging unit for a resident, residential lodging unit for people visiting Tremont. So, so that, there was still some discussion needed on that one. They, the, when there was a vote on whether, every, the discussion recognized that the, that the Long Range Planning Committee is working on redoing the ordinance, which frankly is a very flawed ordinance, but the Long Range Planning Committee is doing that work, but it's going to take a year or even more before that, that work can be done, and then the town can consider what to do next. So, there was a, there was a vote on what the town should do in the meantime, and about two-thirds of the people, I actually think it was closer to seventy percent, thought that the town should enact an interim prohibition on recreational lodging until the, the Long Range Planning Committee had done its work, and about twenty-five percent said that they thought that the town should adopt interim standards for, for recreational lodging. And among those, the interim standards basically broke down along the lines that I mentioned, between a minimum site size, a maximum density, um, and a maximum number per campsite. So, so what the, of the people who participated in the forum, they had very, they had very clear ideas on some things, and some things needed more work. What they were clear about was they needed a new definition of campgrounds, glampgrounds, cottages, motels, all of that. They were clear that, I mean, I think it was over ninety percent said they wanted to see the moratorium extended so that these issues could be addressed in a timely fashion. And there was very strong feeling that the ordinance needed to have stricter standards for campgrounds, glampgrounds, cottages, motels, I mean, whatever, however you characterize, facilities for people coming to Tremont. So, I think the takeaway that I got, and again, I had to step in at the very last minute and try to run this thing, um, which was a little bit challenging and beyond my normal capacity, but the overwhelming feeling I got was that what everybody there wanted was for the town to take more time to try to take time to resolve some of these issues. And, and I think the overwhelming sense was that the hope was that the planning board would try, would recommend to the board and selectmen to extend the moratorium so that these issues could be addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, I think you'll find that the board is in agreement with you about many of these issues, about the, some of these concerns about, uh, that you just mentioned, but something that you said, you're talking about interim standards? I mean, I, I don't even know how that works, or if it even be legal.
Well, let me, let me speak to that in about two sentences, because I won't go on. I think you have to be, I think the, any standards that the town adopted right now could always be changed by the town meeting after you complete the comprehensive planning process. So, that's all I mean by interim standards, is standards that the town would adopt in the short term until the Long Range Planning Committee can complete its work. I think you're right that if you, if they were adopted, if you just said, okay, we're going to adopt these rules, and they're going to expire whenever the Long Range Planning Committee finishes its work, that might be considered a moratorium, and that might violate the hundred and eighty days. But if you make some changes now to hold you over until the Long Range Planning Committee finishes its work, that would be fine. So, I don't think there's really a legal problem. I think the question is whether the town wants to do something, maybe call it a stopgap measure rather than an interim measure, but whatever you call it, it, it can't automatically expire, but it would expire if the Long Range Planning Committee came back with other changes and they were adapted by the town.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, just, just one, I'm curious, did, did any of the discussion touch upon at all things like Airbnbs or just short-term rentals in general, or was it just in the context of, of, I think you used the term recreational, recreational house?
If, if you look at your current ordinance, and, and, you know, by way of background, just so you know, I, I've, I've spent fifty years doing municipal law in Maine, I'm, I'm, I was in law school before most of you were born. The, but, the, the... I just actually lost my train of thought, which is probably the reason.
I was just asking you, the discussion, it sounds like he borrowed.
Absolutely, no. The, if you look at your ordinance right now, um, the, the way the ordinance is written, um, a bed and breakfast is treated as a home occupation as long as it only has four guestrooms. If it has more than four guestrooms, then it's kicked into a commercial category, and it's treated, you know, more or less like a hotel or a motel or whatever. The same thing, you have a very similar thing, which is that you have a whole quite well-thought-out set of ordinance provisions about individual campsite that allow individual people in Tremont to create campsites on their property, um, and those are not treated as campgrounds or, or, or motels or anything else. So, that you, you basically have, you have provisions in the ordinance that allow small-scale facilities for people to do in their houses or on their property. And I think the discussion at the forum was that all of that should be left alone and not, not, not interfered with. I mean, the, the forum was not interested in trying to limit maritime uses, I mean, all the other things that are allowed. They really wanted to focus on large-scale, um, facilities which are providing, whether they're inside or outside, um, sleeping, kitchen, um, living quarters for residents. And I think the sense I got from the forum, and again, I was just trying to moderate the forum, um, was that, that with, whatever the number is, four million people coming to Mount Desert, um, to visit Acadia, there's tremendous pressure for this new kind of, of, of transient, it used to be called transient housing, I call it now more like visitor or, or tourist housing. And that's what the forum focused on, I don't think anybody wanted to touch the B&amp;B provisions or the individual campsite provisions.
Brett? Oh, Brett, I thought you were going to say something, you're muted.
Uh, no, no, that, that was it, I was just, I was just thinking, you know, I'm just thinking about how, you know, you, when you put pressure on.
Oh, you're muted. You're muted. The two most common lang- words in the English language at this point, you're muted. Now he's not muted.
Yeah, it tickled, I don't know what's going on, it clicked on a few times, it didn't unmute. So, thank you for that, I, I was just curious if that, if that came up, because, you know, one of the things I've been thinking about is, is, uh, you know, big picture, sort of unintended consequences, and if you, if you ratchet down, uh, you know, one type of use and, and, um, put pressure on, you know, to squelch that, that, um, you know, people will find it, or, you know, investors or whatever, they'll find another way to do it. And, you know, you could have, maybe people decide, okay, we're not going to put a campground, but we're going to put in a, we'll put in a development that's just a bunch of short-term rental houses.
But actually, your ordinance requires that those be owner-occupied, and, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm not a land use planner, but, but if one of the effects was that everybody in Tremont could make a significant additional income by renting out one or two bedrooms, that doesn't sound like such a bad result to me.
That's what I'm talking about, I'm talking about developments.
Yeah, but, but I'm, what, but if you limited the, the large-scale development, and, and then everybody was allowed to have B&amp;Bs with up to four bedrooms, then, then this pressure that is coming from Acadia might actually work to the benefit of all the people living in Tremont.
To the benefit because they're renting out a room to someone?
Because they could Airbnb a room and, you know, make a lot of money. I don't, I mean, again, I'm not a land use planner, so, so I should probably keep my mouth shut.
So, in that case, it'd be about shifting the economic benefit from somebody who's able to, you know, have a larger piece of land to somebody who has maybe a smaller piece and wants to rent their, their house out, all right?
Or, or another way of saying that might be that it would shift the benefit from, you know, large out-of-town interests to local people.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyway, I think we're getting a little bit off topic, I think the topic is campgrounds here, correct?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, thanks, thank you, sir.
And, and, Mr. Spencer, one quick question, uh, you mentioned the private campsites part of the ordinance. You mentioned the private campsites part of the ordinance. My understanding is that is, that's just if someone, let's say I buy a piece of property and want to come camping here on the weekends or something, I think that's for that, not a commercial, it's not a commercial venture.
Well, if you read the ordinance though, you could, you could Airbnb your, your yurt on your back acres and there'd be nothing that would prevent that. So, so it's not, I mean, if you, it requires that the owner have a house there. So if somebody's got a house there, they're probably not going to go out in the backyard and then camp out. So it's a way of having individual homeowners or property owners be able to have a couple, it's, it's really the same thing as an Airbnb, except that it allows small owner-occupied properties to have a campsite or two.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My takeaway, if I can just say one last thing, is that I think the most important thing that came out of the forum was that the, the, you know, the 45 people who were there would, I think they wanted 98% voted to ask the planning board to ask the Board of Selectmen to extend the moratorium.
Thank you. Any more comments? Board members, anybody have any questions, comments? Otherwise, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I have my hand up.
Oh, okay, I see. Mr. Yizer?
Yeah, yeah, good evening. You may remember I attended your meeting back in July when you were starting to wrestle with this. And you had James Collier as your attorney. And unfortunately, it didn't work out to be a very productive meeting, but I won't go into that. Part of my comments, and I'm going to struggle here between making what I feel recommendations for the addressing campgrounds versus the process that I saw that went on in the, in your meetings throughout the fall. So what I'm used to in my planning is we have a conditional use and, and you have a conditional use for campgrounds, right? You have to issue a permit and that is my understanding is a conditional use. It's not a by right use. And, but there are no metrics that address how you make that decision to issue the permit. And I, I think one of the things that, you know, and this ties back to the light commercial use, I think many ordinances would have, let's say, at least an additional sentence, which quantifies what they're concerned about, the light commercials impact on the residential community that it, that it's within. I'd be happy to, you know, send you some language on that. It's just another sentence. But I, I think what you need to do for starters, and yeah, maybe interim, meaning that it's not the perfect be-all, end-all, but at least until the comprehensive plan group finishes their work, it could help control the situation is to have some simple metrics that maybe you want to have in front of you when you're evaluating whether you think you should be issuing this permit. And, you know, one thing that comes to mind is perhaps tying the intensity of what is being proposed to that of a comparable residential development on the same parcel. So you say, you know, okay, is the traffic, you know, 150% greater than what I would get if I had residential buildout, peak traffic, daily traffic, water usage? Maybe those are just some simple metrics that could be used to, to sort of help you make the decision or help the town make the decision whether or not they want this use to occur within the RV zone. I know you don't have a lot of time, but I was just trying to keep, keep my thoughts kind of simple. I mean, the other thing that kind of concerned me in, in watching your, your process this fall was that some of what I thought the more significant concerns regarding the, the immediate neighbors who were impacted and buffering and things, when we do a conditional use where, where I am, we have a hearing and those things all come out in the beginning of the process. They, they come out even before, and then we do, we went through this whole, you know, adjudication, it was a 26-page document that we worked on and, and, you know, and then addressed all of those concerns right up front, you know, in the sketch plan phase. And, and I kind of saw that happening in the backend of the process and that, that was very concerning to me. I mean, the fact that we didn't know how many people were going to be in that campground till the very end, and then you were approving water calculations based on a number that at least the public didn't know what the, how many people needed to use water in that facility. And I, I'm sitting there and I know we can't comment and join your meeting, but I'm saying, how can they approve things if they don't know what the water usage is going to be? So those were kind of the things that I think need to be, you know, as one of your metrics, if somebody's going to put a campground and they have to say, what is the maximum occupancy? And that should be done at the time when you're thinking about issuing these permits. So I know I'm not giving you, you know, real detailed language here, but these are sort of some of the thoughts that I had that I thought maybe you could, you know, take a look at or think about some more. I sent you some information back in July, I think it was from the Maine State Planning Commission, which I think broadened the definition of recreational lodging facilities. I think there's a lot of good language in there that's appropriate, some is not, but that would capture some of the other things that are going on with the other campground or whatever they're calling it, a non-campground. That would also help you, you know, deal with those issues. So that in a nutshell is my thought.
Thank you. Brett? Oh Brett, I thought you were going to say something. I saw your light come on there.
Mr. Chairman, can I pose a question through you as chair to either Mr. Dewan, Mr. Spencer or Ms. Lawson? I just wanted to know whether they'd be willing to accept the Acadia Wilderness Lodge Campground from any extension of the moratorium.
Mark, Mark.
Just a question.
Mark, you muted yourself, so I'm not sure what you're saying.
Too many muting and unmuting here. Andy, this is a public hearing, we get comments. I don't think you need to post a que, post a question to the CTR people. And board members, if you feel differently, let me know, please.
I don't think he should be arguing his client's case during this public hearing. I mean, he's had his chance, there's appeals going on and so forth. That's where Mr. Hamilton's time belongs, not on this meeting.
I would have to agree. Sorry, Andy. I see Mr. Bradford has his hand up.
Yes, thank you. I hope you can hear me, I'm very remote.
We can hear you, okay? But you, you're very dim.
Yeah.
Visually, that is, yes.
I understand, yes. I'm outside under a lanai in Florida. But rather than rub that in, I just wanted to stress that if you had spent some time looking at the results of the 10 questions, I think it would have been abundantly clear what the participants were trying to say. I mean, 98% wants the moratorium to be extended. And whether that's 44 out of 45, 98%, or wherever you want to slice it, that seems to be an overwhelming majority. Granted, of course, that we don't get all 900 Tremont residents to attend these, but the ones that care enough to attend are overwhelmingly in support of extending the moratorium and like what?
Uh, thank you. I, I believe, as discussed.
Either abandoning. And the other conclusions are equally, a two-hour Zoom meeting, if you took a look at those, you'd, you'd see very quickly what the, what the public is trying to tell you. Thank you.
Uh, yeah. I, I believe Mr. Dewan is going to supply us with some written information about that. Anybody else?
Uh, or you could read the email.
Thank you.
Um, Mark?
Yes.
Will you make it clear that it's not, you're not asking comments from our, the Board of Mollin, you make sure everyone, we got 60 people on here, we're sides ourselves, 50 people. Be sure this is their last chance to participate in these comments. I'm not sure you're coming across whether it's directed to us.
Okay, oh, I'll say it again, okay? Does anybody else have any comments to the planning board about campground standards? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing.
So, did you, did you see that EJ Goldman is asking how to raise their hand in the chat?
And now, and now they're raising their hands physically, which is great.
Okay. So if they unmute themselves, they're, they're welcome to weigh in here.
Thank you very, very much. I don't know how to get the little hand. In the, in the meeting that we were attended and in preparing for the meeting, it became very clear to me that one of the things I would like is to be sure ownership remained in the hands of Tremont residents for whatever it is we have and that it is not a chain, a chain store of any kind or like the campground down at the head of the island is part of a large chain, that it remain always, even if it's sold, it remain in the hands of local residents, whatever the, whether it's a campground or any other life industry. That's something I feel strongly.
Thank you. Was there anything else? Uh, the Edelman's?
Um, yes, I appreciate the planning board's time and all the citizens that have attended yet another meeting. I, I would hope if, if nothing else, the planning board has a sense of how important an issue this is to everybody. And it's very complicated, as you know, and it's really important that we do it correctly. And, and the way to start, I would think, is to hear from people. I don't think I really even heard much about the survey that the Comprehensive Committee put out. I haven't even heard much discussion of that. But I think you do have a lot of information, lot of chance to hear from the citizens and to hear from all the residents about what's really important. And I think everybody knows it's really important because we've watched these dramatic changes on the island and in Tremont in the last several years. The, the potential to have our town completely overrun, completely turned into a strip, I mean, it's really there. That's not hyperbole. That's not just being paranoid. And so it's really urgent that we do this and it's really important that the planning board is putting their efforts into this and that all the citizens are. So I know it can feel contentious. I know people are tired of meetings, but let's do it, let's do it right. We have Terry Dewan, who is an expert on this sort of thing. We're still formulating questions. I mean, this is a, a big issue where you're like, oh, so what about, ooh, should we have a maximum number of campgrounds in the whole time? What about the size? Well, would it work better if the, if people who were butters felt more secure? Those are questions. We're not giving you answers. We're trying to help you formulate questions that we care about. That's all. Thank you.
Bert, were you going to say something? Okay, well, thank you.
No, no, thank you.
Um, Mr. Ross, I believe you're next.
Yeah, I live on 231 Clark Point Road. And I have a suggestion on the light commercial definition. And I was thinking that it really should be restricted to, you know, the, the owner, owned and operated by the residents of the property. I think that's kind of the intent of it. It's, it's, the intent is to sort of be in character of a residential property. And I would say also that the number of employees and the number of guests should probably not exceed some small number. I mean, because it's going to be like a residential business, you're not going to have many owners, I mean, many workers that are not residents of the property. I'm saying there should be some limits on what that number should be. And because, because marine use is an exception, I think that has to come into account too. The example I gave last week is I wouldn't want someone to put up a Walmart because they started to go down. I'm not sure how to define that limitation, but I think it's pretty clear that, you know, the fishing and boating and repair and maintenance of fishing equipment and boating equipment is important. And you could, you could define, I think, at least start a definition of what exactly a marine business is.
Dan, speak, please speak louder and more clearly.
I was, I, I'm sorry.
Some of the things you said were difficult to hear, Mr. Ross.
Okay.
Let's not, no, it's the one opposite.
I think somebody needs to mute themselves. I don't know who it is.
Maybe I have a bad microphone here. Maybe I was sitting on it. Yeah, I mean, I don't repeat myself too much, but, I mean, I, I, basically, I think on the light commercial, I think because it's in a residential area and it should, it should kind of match the residential uses. And so it should limit, I think it should limit a light commercial to be owned and operated by a permanent resident in that property. And it should limit the number of employees outside of that residence to be something small because the residents wouldn't have many employees to be outside. So, you know, something like the number of residents and guests, I think should be limited to something around four or five or something like that. And, and then because marine use is an exception to all that for, for good reasons, I, I think that needs to be defined a little better. For example, the example I gave last week was, was Walmart. You know, if I had put a Walmart up there and claimed it was a marine use because they sold a couple boat anchors, I would think that should be defined as, as, as not, not legitimate. That's really all I was trying to say.
Thank you. You, were you done? I'm sorry. It sounded like.
I'm pretty much done. I don't know how much you heard of the rest of it, so I think that's.
I heard it, I don't know about anybody else, okay? Uh, thank you. Ms. Faulkner?
Hi. Um, I'm Elizabeth Faulkner, Seal Cove Pottery, and have been here over 20 years. In the Comprehensive Plan Committee statement that is in their November meeting notes, they talk about their comprehensive plan and the questionnaire that they had people fill out. And the, it said in there that the public opinion survey is the backbone for any and all goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan and significantly influences the general theme and direction of each chapter of the comprehensive plan. And some of those, it was a wonderful questionnaire, but, and some of the things was that there were over 300 respondents and those were taxpayers. And that people wanted to maintain the quiet rural aspect and that was like 82 to 87%. It was a little hard to figure out, but.
Ms. Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Faulkner, if I can interrupt you here, thought due respect, do you have anything to say about campground standards? You know, there are three members of this board that are on the Comprehensive Plan Committee. We're familiar with that and we're saying that's a whole separate process than what we're here dealing with tonight. So if you have some comments about campground standards, campgrounds standards.
Standards, standards have to be developed according to what the community members feel that they need and what is going to maintain the sense of community and what they define as, as.
Yes, and that's why we're here tonight. We want to hear from you.
Speak, say what you care about.
While, while Elizabeth is on, can I, can I speak, Mark?
Sure, go ahead.
So, one of the standards that I think we need to look at is the buffer zone. With, with the, with the most recent campground that you went through with the process, town had changed it to 50 feet, but they voluntarily said, we'll do 100 feet. I think, I think the board should look very. I think, I think the board should look very carefully at that and think about a hundred feet as being the gold standard. You know, if, if, if I brought fifty people over to your house and had a party and that party went on from June until October, you know, the first night might be okay, but you know, the next three months might not be very good, so. If we had a hundred feet, that party that's happening next door to somebody's house might be diminished by quite a bit than it would be if it was only fifty feet away, so. Just, just one standard out of, but I think that's something that, you know, you should think about. There were a lot of things that came out of that process, so when we were going through that uh, campground stuff that I think need to be looked at again. Thank you.
Uh, let me ask you this, because you know, uh, what you mentioned about buffering and, and the, the instance is something that I plan on discussing later in this meeting when the board discusses uh, possible standards. So my question to you is, is that, do you think that should be dependent upon the size of the campground? In other words, a eight or ten site campground, fifty feet, might be okay, whereas a twenty-five, thirty-five site campground or more, we want to increase it. Just a question for you.
Well, I would ask that, I would ask that to the general public and get their answer. But, you know, I also think you should think about the idea, if, if you were the person living next to that campsite, what would you want? And, you know, that's when you really get down to where the rubber meets the road is what, what you think about it when you're right next to it. Whether it's, you know, ten cabins or, or fifty-five cabins. You know, if you don't have an adequate buffer for, for the noise and all of the other lights and all the things that can occur in a campground, then, you know, your life can be made pretty miserable, I think. So, but I would put that out to the public and find out what, what people would want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because yes.
Could, um,
Ask the public.
Mr. Ross and uh, Ms. Faulkner, could you take your hands down so I don't get confused here? Okay, um, looks like it's Josh Pearl Swig. I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
I've heard worse. That's fine, thank you. Yeah, my name is Josh, so I am uh, uh, not a year-round resident, not a voter, but a taxpayer, property owner. Along with some family members on Dix Point, um, and a member of, of CTR. So I, I, I am sorry that you didn't get the attachment. When Cindy sent that through, we've talked through a couple of the poll questions. I just wanted to say that when you do eventually get to open those, um, and if you didn't have it, you know, I think we'll, we'll make sure it's, it's sent to you again. You know, the number of folks who answered, um, should areas of wetlands, steep slopes, stream buffers and other factors be deducted when you're looking at overall amount of land that should be developed? Pretty much everyone said, yes, that's as good as a recommendation. You know, should the town change the current density requirements for campgrounds? Pretty much everyone in our, in that group, uh, that discussion said that it should be raised above the five thousand per, per site. You know, that, that seems as good as a recommendation. And, you know, look at first, the four hundred and twenty-eight voters who voted for the moratorium in our small poll. Forty-five out of forty-six voters uh, in the poll again. Actually, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Overwhelming majority said extend the moratorium. Should the moratorium be extended? Uh, forty-five out of the forty-seven that voted in the poll. That seems as good as a recommendation. The moratorium needs to be extended because of all the complexity. Um, but there are, I would say, recommendations in this, um, you know, question and total votes cast from the session the other week. Um, so I hope, I hope you don't think that we came with, um, with nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks like Sarah Fina next? No?
Sorry, I had to plug my, my phone and I was losing power.
Okay, are you ready now?
I am already.
Okay, please go ahead.
We all know that we've all spent a long, long time on this, um, you as board members, we as uh, community members and it just boils down to the fact that there is work to be done and it's not something that we're going to decide overnight. So I think the agreement be and the plausible thing to do would be to extend that moratorium. Uh, so that we can spend quality time and continuing to discuss, um, you know, the best outcome.
Okay. Thank you. Was I, was I did?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Looks like Ms., uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mess up your name. I'm sorry. Achuthon? Achuthon? You're muted.
Hey, it's actually, I'm sorry, apologies. I'm Shelby White. My grandson put his name in and I don't know how to take it out. So forgive me.
Quite all right, okay.
My technology skills only go so far and I do not know how to get this name change. I will have to grab him one day and make him do it. But um, I just, I don't, you know, I've sometimes wasn't able to be on all the calls. So I'm just wondering, has there, because you talked about standards, is there anything about size and weight that we should be thinking about? Are there, uh, do some communities have weight standards for this and size of vehicles that are allowed? If there are going to be trailers and things? And have we considered that? And do we know what, whether our roads can sustain, what, what weight our roads can sustain? I, by the way, live on Clark Point Road, so just to give you my interest in the whole matter. But I haven't heard a lot about weight bearing on the roads, wear and tear on the roads and what those standards should be. And I just don't know if I missed it or it's not being considered or it's irrelevant or I, I'd like to know. Here you talk a little bit about that.
If I understand you, are you talking about RVs?
Yes.
Okay. I, I have to say I have no idea. I, I haven't heard of any such a thing and ordinances I've looked at in other towns. I have seen nothing like that. Ordances regarding campgrounds, I've seen nothing like that, so. That's all I could say. Maybe another board member has something to say? I guess not.
I think it's a good question or, you know, it's something to, to, you know, we could, you know, add that as a condition, but it's not as that I know of right now.
Okay, well, uh, then if that's the case, I think we should because the road capacity should be considered. Because if we have these big things coming in, what's going to happen to the need for road maintenance? All of those things. And I just would like to see us put that in when we consider standards. And just because uh, we don't know what other communities are doing doesn't mean we shouldn't be taking a lead in developing something like that.
Agreed. Very good.
Mark, you, yes. Comment on that is there, there will be, you know, I don't want to be a naysayer and throw water on some interesting suggestion. We do have commercial trucks that come in to service, the lobstermen and the boat builders and, and many other businesses. And, and we can't start putting in weight restrictions that would limit vehicles, um, just, you know, house trailers and campers, um, it doesn't impact.
Well, maybe, maybe we can do it in terms of quantity or something like that. Obviously, I would hate to see anything impact the lobster fisherman industry in our area, so I, I, that, but I think that's, it's a very valid point, but I just also think the, there's maybe a way to think about it in terms of quantity uh, and purpose so that we would do something that gives the commercial people the right to do what they need to do. And the non-commercial people would have some limitations. I certainly would not want to limit the commercial fishermen who have been there and are a backbone of the community, so. Uh, thank you for pointing that out and I would amend what I'm saying and say, can we have standards in terms of the non-commercial?
So, you know, I hate to be a naysayer as well, but I think, I mean, the way that we're, we're the planning board, we generally work on land, you know, uses of the land. The roads and the rope, you know, the limits and the weights that can be on road and the, and the traffic, that's not, that's either going to be the state or that's going to be the town, you know, we don't. You know, there's, there's a piece of it where we look at that as part of our review, but it's generally just checking to ensure that the, you know, that the road is of the sufficient rating to, to, to cover the activity and that's it. So it's not necessarily something that's within our purview or we could regulate.
Well, maybe it should be if we're going to have any kind of increase in commercial, in non-commercial traffic. I, I don't know. I, as I said, I, I'm talking about not thoughts, not definitive answers, but asking something about something that I think should be considered.
Ms. White, uh, you know, you mentioned RVs before. Let's say that we and the town adopts an ordinance or standard that prohibits RVs in any campground. We still can't stop them from driving through town.
Yes, but that's hometown. It's a much, that's a much lower incidence.
Who's talking? I was talking to Ms., uh, Ms. White. Shelby White.
Mark, you might, I don't know if you noticed, Mark.
Had a comment on it, which I think is, is a valid comment. But I don't think we can talk about campgrounds without thinking of the impact on the local roads, and so that's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anything else, Ms. White? I guess not. I'll go to, we've had a couple people already weigh in. I see their hands are up again. I'll go to, uh, well, Ed, I'll go to Ed Bear. What, what do you want to discuss here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for continuing the uh, pointy head development discussion this, this evening. I hope that Diane O'Connell is able to get her opinion to us before the next meeting. I just probably am stating the obvious. I'm probably stating the obvious, but it, this, this notion that there was some sort of a public forum at which overwhelming, overwhelmingly uh, things such as eliminating campgrounds, eliminating recreational lodging, prohibiting uh, lodging, uh, campsite areas of forty thousand square feet was simply a meeting um, that nobody on my side of the table was invited to. Uh, I suspect it was a meeting that was attended by people who signed the original petition. And frankly, those people have had seven months now to come up with these ideas and now they're just trying to drag out this moratorium. And plainly, the, the ultimate objective is going to be to prohibit campgrounds or even to prohibit recreational lodging, as Mr. Spencer, I believe, used the term or Mr. Dewan did. And just so that we're clear, um, Mr. Spencer is the partner of the attorney heading up the petitioner's efforts and Mr. Dewan has been hired by them. So I don't think that, that we're necessarily getting a a fair reading of what the public might think. This was not a public meeting. This was a meeting that people of like mind were invited to and others were not.
I, I think we're aware of that, Mr. Bear.
Good, thank you.
Yep, I, 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 I'm amused by his use of the word "we". He's not a resident of this town at all and he represents an applicant who is also not a resident of this town of a development. He should take his arguments when we hear his matter, not before this forum.
Well.
I appreciate.
That's a little harsh. I mean, I represent an applicant.
I mean, yeah. I, I do appreciate your comment though, Ed. I mean, and I frankly, there's, I, I appreciate it. There's certainly a flavor of what I would call a little bit of an echo chamber with that meeting and, you know, I, at least I get that. And I've all, and I also, it, it strikes me that we've had a lot of time here uh, to come up with some recommendations. I mean, it's been going back a long, long time. And we can talk more about this, Mark, when we, we discuss it. But it all, it became clear to me very early on in this meeting of what the strategy was as well. And it's unfortunate. I, I agree that it is important. It's absolutely important. And there are a lot of things here to consider and discuss, but um, you know, we, in the last meeting, we, we, we talked about some of those things and, and the path of you know, either prohibiting campgrounds and if not, you know, what are we going to do? And a lot, and a fair amount of time has passed since then and I've heard a couple of concrete examples about buffering, um, but that's really been it. And I, and I'm disappointed.
Or so no, he didn't hear mine.
I'm muted. Somebody is not muted and it's interfering with uh, hearing uh, what the speaker is saying and uh, please uh, check your screen. And if you're not in the, if you're not speaking or a board member, please mute. Thank you. Ms. Corbin Ramas.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to address the fact that the meeting that was held was public and it was advertised for anyone to come. And that's all I'll say about that. And so the fact that it was, that, you know, that people are, are saying that it was an echo chamber is unfair. And anyone was allowed to come. That's the first thing I'll say. The second thing um, is that just because it was organized and more attended by some subset of people who are like-minded does not mean that other people couldn't attend. So if people who were, who had other opinions had a meeting that wanted, they wanted to have as well with a series of questions, they were welcome to hold that meeting and also bring those exact same questions to this meeting as well. I'm a little confused as to why they, you all keep saying, why haven't we brought recommendations? I think several members keep telling you what the results of the surveys that were held at that meeting were. We keep telling you what the results were. The results are that this many people recommend the following. This many people recommend or said the following. I'm not sure what you expected. Did you want sentences saying, I mean, I'm a grant writer and all grant writers do, or when they write recommendations are they take data from surveys and they translate them into sentences. So a survey might say forty-eight percent of people liked um, something and therefore the recommendation is the following. I'm not sure what you were expecting, that we just translated it into sentences. You have said very clearly that you didn't read what was sent to you. So I don't understand what the difference is between us reading you what the statements were in the surveys or sending you sentences. Either way, you didn't read it. So we're now telling you what the results were. The recommendations are in the surveys. People said that this is what they wanted. We're telling you what people wanted. It's, it's data, it's numbers. This is what people want. Overwhelming, the people who attended the meeting, which was made public, anyone could come. A whole bunch of people who didn't want a moratorium could have attended. But all the people who attended want the moratorium. Almost all of them want the moratorium extended. A whole bunch of people who didn't want the moratorium could have attended. It wasn't because of COVID. It was on Zoom and almost everyone who attended want the moratorium extended. That's just numbers. It's just factual. We're just telling you that the people who attended want the moratorium extended. We will, we have sent you all the numbers and I will only correct Mr. Pearl Swig by.
I think you've made your point. You, you've let us know several times now. Is there something else you want to say?
No, I'm just saying that I, I just don't want you to feel like we didn't do the work. Because I would just want to congratulate the people who organized that meeting for being extremely transparent to the community, inviting them. I'm just very impressed with the work they did. It was so well organized. And I don't want anyone to feel that it wasn't transparent. And I was just very impressed with how organized the meeting was, even when the person who facilitated it ended up not being able to do it, it still went on. It was extremely um, transparent and actually quite objective. And people who were of different mind also were able to say that they did not agree with most of the people, many people who weren't there. So I would love it if you would all, the people on the planning board, look at the results and see people who didn't agree and did agree and see what those people at that meeting felt about what those questions were. So I think they were extremely interesting and could give you some very good ideas.
We've already established that Mr. Dewan is going to provide us with that information.
You have the information is what I'm trying to tell you.
I set a deadline at an earlier meeting for submissions.
You haven't.
We didn't receive anything within, within that deadline. That's all I'm going to say about that. Can we move on now?
I would like to say one more sentence. Please, please stop interrupting.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. What I would like to say is that I think specifically with Shelby's statement about the vehicles and that kind of thing. I think it is clear that with all the different discussions we've had and the different things that people are bringing up, that this is an extremely complex situation. And that there is no way that in one meeting or 10 meetings, that all the different issues can be decided. And that there has to be more time to discuss this. And that there has to be an extension to figure this out. And so I would ask that everybody on this meeting who agrees that there should be an extension of the moratorium, either virtually or with the show of hands, raise their hand if they think there should be an extension of the moratorium. Thank you. Just raise your hand if you think there should be an extension of the moratorium. Because all of you keep saying it's the evidence.
Yeah, thank you. What, what's remarkable to me is I thought this meeting was about, was about getting feedback on changes to the, to the, to the zoning.
About campground standards. Campground standards, yes.
You keep saying that and all the questions are about the campground.
It was a lobbying effort. And it's remarkable to me.
If you read the questions in the survey, you would see that those are all about the standards.
Moving quickly enough.
They're all about the standards. If you had attended the meeting, you would have seen they're all about the campground standards. They did an excellent job at the meeting about very detailed questions about the standards. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Mark, I, I would add observations that, that, that the meeting did have more people in attendance than we have tonight. And yet tonight, what we have attending tonight, everyone's still on the same of tonight's group of the same approach that extended the moratorium and looking at campground standards and whether the campground should be here at all. We haven't heard of anyone at the moment. On the other side, this argument. So it's two meetings. One is your public meeting, which you keep talking that we're having. And the other one was this one that was also public, but, but was not hosted by us.
So why don't we just put it to the voters, Jeff? A moratorium, you know, eliminate campgrounds, prohibit them and see how the vote goes when we put it to the voters.
Well, that's surprising. Discussion the board should be having after the public hearing, okay? Take a deep breath here. I see hands raised. Whoever we heard from. It was a Sarah Yatarian, I think, or something like that. I don't know where that person went.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. I'm here. I, 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 I just feel I'm a summer resident. I look forward to living in Tremont when I retire. I have been a summer resident for the past 20 years. My mother, who just recently passed, was a resident for 20 years also in Tremont. And I think that all of the sentiments this evening that have been shared about the future of where Tremont is going is that a concern, we don't have a, a plan. I, I have realized that the board is looking to hear constructive ideas. And I believe, if, if I'm hearing correctly, that the big idea is that there is not a, a, a bigger plan about where you want Tremont to go and, and how you want it to look. And I think that the slowdown and the pause button is what is being asked for, and I would have to concur with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It looks like we have a few other people. I don't know whether Chuck or Ruth Yizers, please, please keep your comments brief. I think we're getting near the end here so that we can move on and start discussing some other things.
Yeah, no, no problem. I'll, I'll do that. You brought up buffers and I just wanted to throw in some experience that I've had. I think the idea of having a more significant buffer, like 100 foot, is a good one. And then what we have in our ordinance is that there are certain performance measures that the applicant, if they can demonstrate that they can properly buffer via vegetation, or maybe there's a natural feature, that that buffer can be reduced to, let's say, 50%. So that would get you back to 50 feet. And, and that determination can be made by your planning board. And I don't think you should necessarily tie a buffer to a size, whether it's five campsites or 100 campsites. I think it should be a number and then you can relax that number if the applicant can demonstrate to your satisfaction that it can be properly buffered from the neighbors. That, that was my, my comment on buffer. My other quick comment, which I, I thought about for a while, is I really think the township should consider, when you have land developments over a certain size and intensity, of hiring an engineer who's, who works with you, not necessarily you pulling out questions for them. Because it was obvious to me, I'm a civil engineer, you were over your head, I was over. It would have been over my head, some of those questions. But if you have an engineer who works with you through the process to review these applications, not just address things that you pull out for them to discuss, that would help this go a lot better. And we do that in our township and the applicant actually pays for that. And I, I think for projects over a certain, regardless of whether it's campgrounds, I really think the township should consider making that their policy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah? Dina? You're muted.
Yeah, I should be okay now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I was offended earlier by the statement that was made, that there's some kind of an agenda here or that there's a strategy. Because, you know, just like you, we've been working hard on this. And I think we're all looking for the same goal. And I don't think there's any hidden agenda here by any means.
I don't think anybody was accusing you of having a hidden, hidden agenda.
Well, quote unquote, the strategy, that there was a strategy here.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that'll do it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Last chance for anybody to comment. Otherwise, we're going to close the public hearing.
Mark?
Yes.
You may want to take a minute and review the chat room of comments made there. And there may be something we want to respond to. There's.
If anybody wants to, they're welcome to join in here at the public hearing. I'm not going to review comments on the side.
Well, it's part of the public hearing. It's, you, you have it as an option on, on the screen. You should have closed the chat room if you didn't want that to happen.
It should have been closed, like we've done in other meetings. But we have somebody else new that's, a new CEO that's running this meeting. And he probably didn't realize that. I should have probably reminded him of that. If anybody is.
And you undoing snide dismissive remarks.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's what, you know, if anybody, I'll, I'll invite them right now. If anybody is, has any comment on the chat room and wants to weigh in right now before I close the public hearing, please do so right now.
So I don't, I don't have anything in the chat room and I don't have the ability to raise my hand. My name's Danine Welsh. We live in Bass Harbor. And I just, the only comment I want to make is kind of in conjunction with Tim Ross's comment about, so there is, there is business use, there's private business use and there's public business use. And I think Tremont needs to be cognizant of that. And so private business use is where I may be selling Tupperware out of my house. And the impact to my community and the people around me is pretty minimal. And then there's public business use, which is a campground next door to my house, which has a really significant impact. And I think that Tremont needs to be aware of that distinction and take it into consideration when they're thinking about campground. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I hear nothing. Okay. We're going to call the public hearing to a close. Yes.
Point of order for a moment. If we close the public hearing, might we want to consider adjourning the public hearing? We're asking, I think we've asked for at least feedback in written form from Terry Dewan and Mr. Spencer and on some of the issues they raised as to approaches to addressing some of the, the whole purpose of the moratorium. And if we get those in, we may want at least those two people, if not others, to respond to what they've submitted. And we should have, have it opened to public hearing. And in the past meetings, you are very restrictive of who you allow address to board when it's not a public hearing. So I'm wondering whether we should consider extending it or adjourning it. And so when we get the material in, if that's the route we're going to go and review this material and we have questions about, we have an ability to hear some explanations other than what's submitted to us.
Other board members, any comment on or response to what Jeff was suggesting?
I'm not quite as clear about this or procedural pieces, but I, I do think that I want to make sure that we, there's some way to make sure that we are able to receive and sort of consider the written comments from the CTR meeting last week. And whether that's adjourning this public hearing or not, you know, since this isn't part of a, a specific application, I'm not sure if we're like bound by some procedural steps where once we close this public hearing, we then have to take some action in the future. I think we could. I don't know, but I guess I'm, this is a question out of statement, like, could we then ask for, you know, Terry Dewan to speak at our next meeting if we decided that that's something we wanted to do?
I believe we can. Mr. Larson? John?
The question is.
If we close the public hearing, we can still take public comments on things if we have questions at later meetings. Yes or no?
Yes.
That was a yes, correct?
Yes.
That satisfy you, Jeff?
I'm not really, because if we, I, I, I'm so open to all suggestions and what's going to be discussed that if we get just material from a Mr. Spencer, Mr. Dewan or others, there may be people who object to that sort of thing, would like to address it from the public. And, and we're cutting off those people from addressing some of the materials being submitted to us to review and consider. So I feel that the extending the public hearing would give everyone to weigh in. And, and certainly Brett has made a big point of, you know, this is a select group or whatever he refers to it as. So I want to be sure it's always open to everyone in the community to address what we're looking at. And we haven't seen everything in writing or we've gotten it, but some of us haven't read it. And, and give everyone a chance to weigh in on some of the truth being submitted.
Anybody else?
I'm wondering if, and maybe some of the board members who have been on the board longer than I have, like, do we ever just include like a period for public comment as like a standard piece of every meeting?
It's optional.
Right. And so I guess maybe given the level of engagement from the public over the last year or so, it might be useful to opt into including a, a public comment period. So that, so that we could close this public hearing officially and then have public comment at the next meeting if there are members of the public who feel like, you know, there's something more to add. That's one thought. I don't know if that addresses your concern, Jeff, but.
And can we reschedule another or just schedule another public hearing?
Well, that, that's further delays with timing.
What's that?
That's more delays as far as notice and timing and so forth. I was trying to be more efficient in time. I, I think Lawson raised a very, if we can agree as a committee and if, as a board, and if a motion's needed, we'll make a motion that we, we can close the public hearing, but put on the agenda for next meeting, the right for the public to comment at the meeting. So we know it's built into it after we, once we close, part of the process of closing the public hearing.
Brett, any thoughts? Beth? Nope. Brett, are you still there?
Yeah, my audio is coming in and out. Miss, I don't know what's going on with this meeting, but it's been going in and out for all night. I, you know what? Yeah, I agree with Jeff that, you know, whatever we get for additional written comments is likely going to generate the need to have, you know, more discussions, questions, comment. And so I, I don't, I'm in devils to how we get there as long as we somehow provide for that opportunity.
Okay. So you suggest, like Jeff, that we adjourn for now and pick up the public hearing at some later point. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that. I, you know, I, I don't feel like we, we'll see how our discussion goes, but I don't, I don't feel like we have a lot to work with so far.
Yeah, okay. Fine. I'll take a motion to that effect then.
I, I move that we adjourn the public hearing until our, our next meeting. I don't have the date in front of me. Can John Larson tell us what the date of the next meeting is?
The 25th. I'm not John Larson, but.
Does that give us enough time for notification? And if we adjourn, do we need notification, John?
No, it should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay. So we're okay. We don't have to worry about the, the time for publishing it in the newspaper. If we just adjourn and, until our next meeting.
Well, I think it would be better suited to request that the select board extend or not extend the moratorium.
But we don't want to do that now. That's a separate issue. The, the selectmen will be meeting before our next meeting. Their, their meeting and public hearing and extending the moratorium will precede our next meeting. So, but the thing is, whether they vote to extend the moratorium or not, it doesn't mean that we can't keep working on some of these things.
Mark, Mark, I think, I think what John's referring to is I think before we close this meeting, we close the public hearing and we continue with our board meeting, we may want to make a motion requesting the planning board to extend the moratorium. But I don't think. I don't leave our motion to extend.
I, this, the public hearing is not a time for us to do that. I say we do that after the public hearing.
If, if you let me finish, that's all I was going to say to you.
Okay. Oh, okay. That's what you were going to say. Okay. Yeah. So are you going to again make a motion or did you make a motion or that, please make another motion to about?
I move that we adjourn the public hearing until our next meeting, which is January 25th, I hear you say, Lawson?
Yep.
To our next meeting on January 25th at 6:00 PM to be held by Zoom in accordance with the regulations. to be held by Zoom in accordance with the regulations because of COVID.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second on the table to adjourn the public hearing until our next meeting at 6:00 PM by Zoom. Any discussion?
Are we supposed to say because of the COVID requirements? I don't remember the procedure here.
Because of the COVID, you, you said that, that was the motion. I didn't state, restate the entire motion, but you included that in the motion, yes. Hearing no, no discussion, I'll call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Beth? Beth, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Time is what? 7:53. Okay. Full business, we dealt with pointing heads, discussion on amendments, section, some of the land use ordinance that pertain to campgrounds. Now, Jeff, I saw that you included something in our packet. Maybe you can explain what your recommendations are here.
Well, actually, it's interesting.
First of all, is this something you came up with or is it something you found somewhere?
Well, I'm, I, I actually submitted far more than got circulated. I think the only thing came back in my packet that I submitted was some language from other communities that I found simply by searching online of definitions of like commu- of like commercial and how they handled that. And I brought up at the last board meeting, that's another way of addressing campground situation by addressing the like community, uh, like, excuse me, like commercial definitions. So I submitted, I submitted two other, three other different languages and so forth about campgrounds and our definitions and so forth. And I didn't see that included by John. I didn't know he was gonna include any of this. He'd written to me and said, Jeff, you had some notes, would you share them? And I did share them, but I shared far more than what got circulated or somewhat more than what got circulated.
Okay.
Every.
Wait, and so, is that, Jeff, is that, I mean, I don't know, it's a eight-page document or something like that that starts with four campgrounds, create a more inclusive definition?
It got, it got two. What's in my packet is stapled together two things I submitted about like commercial and then something about campgrounds in Lemoine. I didn't submit that, that came in.
That was John. That was John.
Okay.
It's just helpful to understand like where things are coming from and what they're.
Well, that's not under my control. John asked me to send him some notes. I didn't even know them.
Acknowledge that.
And I submitted things concerning recreational lodging facilities. I submitted some stuff concerning some statutes and existing other areas in our, in the main statutes about dwelling units and campgrounds and cottages and lodging places. And so I submitted those as well to, to John with my email, but they didn't get concluded. So I, I was surprised to see that like commercial got included. I didn't know what he was gonna do with it. I don't care. I mean, I'm glad they got included. I had other things also that I included that didn't get into our packets and which were more on point of what we were discussing tonight versus just the like commercial thing that I brought up to last meeting.
Okay. So can you explain what we have in front of us then?
We have two documents that I think I just did of describing how other communities have handled the expression or the words like commercial and define them. And they go on.
Okay, yeah. Oh, these things, yes, of course. Yeah, I found these last summer and we discussed, I discussed them at one of the meetings we had there. Well, I think what I said was this includes a lot of things that I, I don't think our town would consider like commercial. But let me remind you, Jeff, we're here to discuss campground standards. If we try to define like commercial or that where it affects other businesses, other development in the town. And that's not what we're here to discuss. It's campground standards. So.
Let me remind you, Mark, that I was only asked to submit notes I prepared in anticipation of the last meeting, which I did. I had no control of the fact that what talked about campgrounds and, and recreational facilities didn't get included in the packet. That was, I submitted that as well. So I don't need to hear from you that we weren't going to address like commercial. I submitted things at John's request.
So we have things in our packet here. I'm asking you, we, please tell us what you, you've come up here with the recreational lodging facilities and that sort of thing. I.
Is there anything in your packet about recreational facilities?
Yes.
Yeah, the front page.
Yeah.
Is a definition, I think, or a.
There's something about noncluster residential development standards. And then lastly, I suggest that Article 3, Section 4, blah, 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 recreational lodging facilities.
Yes, I was trying, I put together some, these were just working notes I had at the meeting to discuss different ways of looking at campgrounds and looking at, we got all tied up in whether cabins or whether yurts or whether platform tents or whether trailers and campers, what constitutes a facility, what constitutes a lodging, what constitutes campgrounds. And I was trying to put together some notes as to sort of pulling all that together as we address the campground situation. And then I also submitted some main ordinances that didn't get included in the packet.
Okay, I understand that. Okay, I don't understand this noncluster residential development standard part. I'm asking you to explain it.
It's just, it's, it's a way of looking at, again, this is just random notes I prepared in trying to put together different ways of how campgrounds can impact community. And, and we, as was brought out by someone tonight, you know, we should have the same impact readings of a campground as we would as a residential development. And in our ordinances, we have clustered and nonclustered ordinances and so forth. So if we can look at this sort of thing and how we address that for residential and see if it applies to campgrounds.
Are the percentages like the 150% of water supply, is that like 150% of a residential development on the same site?
Yes. It's trying to put some, we're lacking a lot of standards in reviewing campground applications. So it's trying to put some other standards in here that people raise questions about, septically raised questions about whether it's going to draw down the water. We had what land was replenishing the wells and would always be included in the calculations. There was a lot there that for, we don't cover adequately in our ordinances. Maybe we don't need to go this route. It was just a thought of a different approach.
Do you know right off where it has noncluster residential development standards in our ordinance?
No, I don't. I don't have it in front of me.
You haven't what?
I don't have it in front of me, no.
Okay. So I saw cluster development, but I didn't see anything about noncluster residential development. Unless it's just all the things that have to do with residential development in general.
Yeah, it seems like if we were gonna go this route, we'd then need to make sure that the, that we get really specific about whatever that 100% is, like what is the baseline that we're comparing it to? And, you know, for a household, what is the daily peak, the daily traffic generation? What is the peak hour traffic generation for a single-family house or whatever it is?
Correct.
And that's probably not in our standards or ordinance right now, but could be if we did our, went that route.
Now, how about your definition of recreational lodging facilities? It includes a lot.
Yep. Well, it's a random thought of how, I try to include so many things that, you know, we keep, every time we get an app, the application was done, they keep accepting this and this. I'm trying to make a, a list of all the different types of facilities that, you know, as it was pointed out again in our public hearing, camping has changed. And, and it's evolving into a more lampy and so forth facilities. I was trying to come up with all sorts of words and so forth. We cover everything at one time. We don't have another one coming in saying, well, you know, if I put a boat up in a tree or something or other, it's, it's not covered as a place for someone to stay in.
Right. But this includes hotels, motels, and inns?
Mark, just read it and think about what we want to do. I submitted something. Where's the material from all the other board members? I like to look at what everyone else is coming up with. I don't feel like. Defense of work part.
Why we're here to discuss. I just asked you first because you submitted something in writing.
Yeah. Well, can I see what you submitted so we can discuss that as well?
Okay, well, I have a question. Okay. Why are hotels, motels, and inns recreational lodging facilities?
Oh, Mark, I am just trying to have some thoughts so we include everything in our thought pattern so we don't have an application can walk around in ordinance that we didn't think of something. So I'm just putting things forward for us to think about. I put something in writing for us to look at. That's all. Just.
I, I'm asking you a question. Why can't you answer it?
I thought I did. Why can't you listen?
I ask you, why are hotels, motels, and inns a recreational lodging facility?
The way I drafted this, yes.
Certainly not everybody that stays in a hotel motel or inn is here to recreate. I, I, that's what, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, so maybe it needs some more like, I mean, this is whatever, iteration one of who knows how much. And maybe we'll find out that, yeah, like it shouldn't be a recreation, like the recreation is different from a hotel. But that's okay. We, we aren't there yet. Like, I think.
Yes, thank you.
And, you know, I think that they're like, if we want to dive into this and work with it, that's, might be useful, I don't know. And try to like pull apart the little like, I don't know, like primarily nat- natural resource based. That's an interesting phrase. It could mean lots of different things. We could spend a lot of time trying to new ones that. I think before we go too deep into this, I would say thank you, Jeff, for giving us something to talk about. It's super useful. And, um, and, and I think it's an interesting sort of bigger picture concept, which is, do we want to define, have a definition that's more maybe inclusive and, and therefore sort of regulate uses together? Do we want to be treating glampgrounds and campgrounds the same? Do we want to be doing those two things the same as hotels and motels and the same as boatels? And like, I'm not quite sure how big of a tent we want this definition to include. That, that's sort of the first question that this brings up to my mind, which I think is useful, like, how broad or narrow do we want a definition of whatever it is we're trying to write an ordinance about?
If, if John had included the main statute that I had sent to him as well, the main statutes read the campground generally accept definitions of camping areas, recreational vehicle parks, seashore resorts, lakeshore places, picnic and lunch grounds, and other premises, and goes on. So even the statutory definition in Title 22, Section 2491 has a broader definition than just a tent or recreational thing, whatever you said, Mark. I don't know what you meant by that, but, so.
Recreational lodging facility, that's what you, you wrote.
Jeff, does the statute differentiate between campgrounds and hotels?
I'm sorry, well, I.
Does the statute differentiate? Cause it seems to me like that there's some dividing line between a hotel and a campground. I'm not quite sure I know what that dividing line is, though.
I'm not sure why we're spending a lot of time on this other than some working language to fool around with and talk about and look at other suggestions.
Okay, you're suggesting we move on, Jeff?
Depends what you're gonna move on to, Mark.
Pardon?
I don't know what you're moving on to, so I don't know.
I mean, other ideas board members may have.
That's a great idea.
But isn't a campground, I mean, a, a group of individual structures or whatever. I mean, a hotel and a motel is all under one roof and a campground is more of an individual unit or whatever, tents or cabins or so that one family would stay, you know, in that unit. I mean, a bunch of individual units, whatever they are for a campground.
If you could sit a little closer to your mic, you're breaking up for me. I couldn't understand all that. Sorry.
Well, like a campground is more of a group of individual buildings or structures, whereas like a hotel or a motel is all under one roof. But a campground is where, you know, a family would go and stay in a tent or they'd stay in a year or they don't stay in a building that houses more than one unit.
That seems to make sense to me, Beth.
Living unit.
Yeah, I, I think that that idea of sort of one structure versus many structures, it starts to get fuzzy when you start connecting those structures with sidewalks or awnings or, you know, if it's a covered sidewalk, like at what point does it become one unit? So if it's, is it a motel or is it a series of cabins? And that could get blurry. I'm not sure, you know, we need to, but I think to, I think Mark's question about like, what should we be talking about tonight? Definitions is certainly one of the things that I think is useful to, is on at least my agenda of.
I'm looking at our, yeah, I'm looking at our land use ordinance and hopefully people can hear me. I had to drop. I don't know. My connection's not great.
You sound good, Brett.
Our land use ordinance on page 73. This is the May 12th, 2020 version, which I believe is the most current. There's a definition of camp.
Sorry, go ahead, Brett.
There's a definition of campground and camp sites.
Right.
And one thing that strikes me is they're not, they don't actually, it, it talks about a campsite as any plot of ground within a campground, which, fine. But if you look at campground, it doesn't actually link back to campsite. I think it should. And then it talks about tents, RVs, or other shelters. And I think what Jeff is getting at, we all know what tents, well, I'm not even gonna say that. We generally know what tents are, but other shelters, like I don't know that, that there's a separate definition for a shelter.
I don't think there is. I think.
I think it should say something like other shelters that, that if you need something else there. I mean, this is where you get into Jeff and help me out here. There was some discussion about cooking, like cooking facilities and whether, if, you know, if it contains cooking facilities, then it's, it's, it's a.
It's an actual dwelling unit.
It's a dwelling unit. So we don't want the other shelters to be dwelling units, right? So it should say other shelters that are not dwelling units at a minimum.
Good start.
And then I think it should say an area of tract of land that contains campsites that, that, you know, like it should, the campground and campsite should be tied.
John, are you, are you there? Could you turn the comments off, please? It's distracting. This is a discussion aboard among the board members. Thank you. It's distracting. This is a discussion aboard among the board members. Thank you. Now, how about something, there's that place in Trenton and I believe also Hinkley's cottages, maybe there in Bar Harbor, Halls Cove, whatever. There, there are places that are, for lack of a better word, a motel or whatever, that aren't all, all the units aren't inside one building, right?
So why are you calling that a motel?
What's that?
What? So why did you call that a motel?
Because I think that's how they advertise. I mean, I'm just, yeah.
But it's individual buildings.
They're individual buildings. Yeah.
But side by side.
But, yeah, but they're not, they're not.
Connected.
There's, they're not connected and there's no cooking facilities and no, in there.
Do we know them?
I think in some cases, yeah, but.
I'm and think in some cases, doesn't mean we know. Do we know it or we don't know it?
I'd have to check. I don't know.
So maybe, I mean, it seems like that would fall under recreational lodging facilities. And, um, you know, going back to the definitions and the land use ordinance, if you keep going a couple of pages after campsites and campgrounds to hotel, motel, boatel, cabins, cottages, et cetera. To me, that's the closest thing our definition had, you know, our definitions have right now of recreational lodging facilities. Maybe we should just expand or revise that line in our ordinance to be something closer to Jeff's draft. But that puts them all under one, under one category of places for people to come visit and stay for a short amount of time.
Anybody else?
Well, I think you then, I, I, you're still gonna end up with subcategories because a campground.
Brett, we lost you.
Yeah, we did.
By an RV or a camping unit. That's very different than a building.
Brett, we heard you say that we're gonna end up with subsections, which I agree, but that we didn't hear much after that.
Not really. Um, it just feels like a cork.
I think your point is that an RV is different from a motel, which is different from a campground.
Yes, I, I, I think, I personally feel like you need to have two categories, at least two categories, two definitions and not try to, try to stuff everything into recreational lodging facilities. Because there's just such a huge difference between a campsite and a motel. No, I can see cabins or cott- I, I can see cabins or cottages getting picked up within a campground if they're a shelter that's not a dwelling unit. That's on a campsite.
That makes sense. I, you know, my point about hotels and motels are people don't just stay there to recreate. They stay there for a lot of reasons. Okay. They might be visiting, attending someone's wedding. Okay.
But isn't that true for a campground too?
That's true for a campground. That may be true, but, but the difference is in the use itself.
Yeah, or grouped in within the, the concept of a campground and camp sites, depending on how they're set up.
And would.
I like the, I like the idea of other, adding other shelters that aren't dwelling units to the definition. As Brett suggested.
Right, that rule, cause that may, you know, you've got, that means, as I recall, it means no, you know, you can't have a kitchen. You can't have cooking facilities. I think that's what we've discussed.
I think it's cooking and bathroom facilities. Yes.
Well, then if, you know, it raises the point if you decide, I, I suggested that because I was, I was thinking conceptually that they'd be treated differently than cabins or cottages, but but maybe not. If you, if you, and maybe if, if, if they're then query, I guess what hap- I guess if they're a cabin or a cottage that has those things, then they're a dwelling unit. You just go, it turns into a residential review.
Right. Uh, residential dwelling unit. Here's our definition. A room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as permanent, seasonal or temporary living quarters for only one family at a time and containing cooking, sleeping and toilet facilities. The terms shall include mobile homes and rental units that contain cooking, sleeping and toilet facilities. Regardless of the time period rented, recreational vehicles are not residential dwelling units.
Yeah. So you've got, I think you've got to ensure that it maybe it's already there by implication, but I would say shelters that are not dwelling units. And then I think, but to Jeff's suggested language here, I think what he's, when you talk recreational lodging facilities, the question becomes whether you, you then add, if we think we should add, uh, cabins, cottages, uh, within, you know, put it in and have this one global, you know, definition of recreational lodging.
I think Brett is going down a line that we could, we could look at, I think, pulling it together as to what we all are trying to focus on as far as what a campground is and is not.
I mean, I think from the perspective, you know, what we're hearing from the public, things like, you know, the smoke, the, the, uh, uh, impact on, uh, the water, uh, roads, uh, you know, lights. Um, I'm not seeing a lot of difference between a campground with campsites with tents or others, or other shelters on it. I'm not seeing a lot of difference between that and a collection of cottages that are kind of set up the same or cabins that are set up the same way. I mean, you might have a little bit of, you know, the way the stormwater hits is a little different, but I, I don't, is anyone seeing a reason to treat those differently?
A group of cabins that aren't residential dwelling units, you're saying? Should be considered, should be considered a campground.
Well, or whatever we want to call it, recreational lodging facility. I'm just trying to figure out whatever we want to, you know.
Well.
And it really goes back to, you were poking, you were poking at Jeff's definition because it included hotels, motels. And, and I agree. I don't think it's, I think those are, and I don't even know what a boatel is, but I think hotels and motels are different enough that you wouldn't, they're not, they're not, they're too different and you couldn't craft rules that, that fit and worked for that larger group. But I, I, I'm not, as I sit here, not seeing a lot of difference between, or I can't think of a lot of difference between, um, campsites with tents on it versus, versus yurts versus cabins. I don't, I'm not seeing a lot of, any reason to treat those differently from a land use perspective. I'm just asking the question.
I, I agree totally. I mean, isn't that what we just approved at Akati Wilderness? We have, we have yurts. Yeah. And, uh, they were gonna do cabins, right?
Uh, yeah.
They weren't residential dwelling units, but it was still a campground. I, I, I agree with that totally. It's, you know, as long as we spell that out.
But that's only. Now, I will say one thing, you know, you said, you said something, and sometimes when you see cabins, this is kind of, I'm kind of curious to get your thought, Lawson. They're, they're close together, like they're all in a row. Like you see these cabins and they're kind of just lined right up in a row. They're pretty densely populated. And so, and so the one thing that would be different is if you have, you know, we've heard a lot about site size. Uh, I think we're at 5,000 feet. I think the 10,000 feet was floated. I mean, yeah, square feet, 20,000 was floated. If you did that with cabins, you wouldn't, you'd see them spread out. And you had said something, Lawson, in a meeting that struck me was that, you know, when you spread it out, yeah, you, you, you decrease the density, but you actually could potentially increase the environmental impact.
Right.
And you might see 10 cottages on a small piece of land and 10 cottages spread all out. So I'm just kind of curious what, what your thoughts, cause you, you know, you see these cottages and cabins or they tend to be pretty close together and grouped. And, you know, for whatever reason.
Yeah. Well, and I think that there's, like, now we're getting into questions around performance standards and what are we evaluating? Like, if we put all these into one bucket, calling it recreational lodging facilities, we then need performance standards that are sort of specific, but also flexible enough to treat a row of 10 cabins that are, you know, could be within 100 feet, right? You could just stack them right next to each other, um, sort of the way they are along Route 3 in, uh, Trenton. Um, and that, I don't know, I mean, I'm not convinced that that's what we want here in Tremont, but, uh, but we might prefer that to 10 tiny little cabins spread across 10 acres. Um, and and so I think.
So that would be potentially one reason not to necessarily include cat, you know, anyway, yeah.
Yeah, right. But I think that you could do that, you could add the sort of the same argument, whether it's a yurt or it's a even just a tent platform. And there are certainly, I mean, it's not the sort of, it's not in vogue in Maine, but certainly if you go to Europe, campgrounds are much denser than anything in Maine. And maybe that will change. Where somebody will say, yeah, we're gonna do like an urban campground in Tremont. That sounds weird, but it could happen. Where on one acre, we're gonna have 10, 10 sites. And I'm not, we haven't yet gotten to performance standards, but I, I, it seems to me like it would be nice to have something that if you're only having 10 sites or five sites, then your density limits can go way up where you could have like lots of units per acre or units, you know, or they could have, they could be smaller sites. But if you're gonna put in 50 sites, then they need to be a little more dispersed, a little more spread out. I'm not quite sure exactly how to do that.
That's why you need a formula. We need a formula.
Yeah. So, so Lawson, Lawson, so if I understand you correctly, you, what you're saying is essentially applying or what you're proposing is essentially applying cluster development standards to a campground.
Well, yes. That's really one route. Cluster, at least my understanding of cluster development would be that you would concentrate the development, but then preserve some undeveloped land. That's one model. Another model is like, I only have one acre to develop. I'm not gonna preserve anything else. But because I'm where I am, I don't know where the right place in Tremont is for a super dense one acre parcel, but maybe there's a possibility for that. I'm not quite to the point of advocating for that. I'm just sort of suggesting that, that, that there is a scenario where we could write an ordinance that allows for very dense, small sites where the maximum of five sites or maximum of 10 sites, whatever we determine that small campground would to be.
Well, this does suggest to me though, that we could put cabins and cottages under the same sort of, under the same, there, there would be a way to, to address the, the cottages in a more cluster if we wanted to.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. Yeah. And then the problem, well, that's the problem. Could you even then go into a motel? Like what if you then put those 10 cabins right next to each other? So they're sharing a wall. Or do we really want a separate ordinance that deals with motels and hotels?
I think we do. Cause they're just, you know, to, to Mark's point, they're just very different people, you know.
We lost.
We lost you again.
We heard you say that they are very different, but nothing after that.
I think we lost them altogether.
I think I can hear you now, maybe.
Yep, you're back.
Yeah.
We didn't hear the end of what you were saying.
Yeah. I don't remember what it was. I think, I think, well, no, I think I started to say, we got a lot of feedback about clarifying the definitions. And I think that's where, I think that's where we need to start.
But is the, do we want to continue with the definition of a campground or do we want to call it something else? I mean, do you wanna?
I, I think what you do is we probably do have a recreational lodging facility definition. And then within that definition, campgrounds included, and then there, there could be a separate definition for a campground, just like campgrounds, I think should have a definition of a campsite within a campground. So I think it starts with, with recreational lodging facility. And I think the real change is that you, you need to separate hotels, motels and motels from cabins and cottages because cabins and cottages are more like campgrounds than they are hotels and motels, the way a campground is going.
I do like the, the new definition, recreational dwelling units encompasses all these things. I just was, I didn't, I thought this included some things that didn't belong in that group, as you pointed out, hotels and motels. So I'm okay with that.
Well, let's.
But, but beyond that, beyond that, a lot of people just, we just heard from a lot of people that said, oh, or we just heard that a lot of people at the, um, community building held, held by the CTR people said, they don't want campgrounds.
Well, I mean, that's the, I mean, we're out of the gate. I suppose you could, you could, and that's sort of a gamble, right? I mean, I suppose you could, we could revise the rules to prohibit campgrounds and put that to the voters and see what happens. So the all or nothing approach. I don't know. I, I don't know.
Then they're gonna want to know what the definition of a campground is.
Yeah. Well, yeah. And do you want to prohibit cottages and I, I don't know, ca- cabins?
I don't think that's gonna apply.
I don't either.
A lot of people making money on those things.
Yeah.
So, okay. We agree that we need to better define campgrounds and maybe also call them recreational lodging facilities, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So what do we want to do for standards if we allow these things and don't just outright ban them? We discussed at our last meeting, a few things. I remind you what we did last spring and was it a meeting? Cause I did get asked about that. Um, we increased the setback from 25 feet to 50 feet. We clarified which buffering standards actually applied for campgrounds. We, um, added that each campsite must have a 30 gallon or larger trash, trash receptacle. And that each campsite must be equipped with a masonry or metal fire pit approved by the town's fire chief. That was it.
So we went from 25.
You're breaking up. Sorry.
Yeah, we went from 25 feet to 50 feet, Mark.
Correct. Correct. Now, at our, our last meeting, when we briefly discussed this, we had some decent ideas. One was like different categories of campgrounds, i.e. maybe like smaller campgrounds. Uh, set a minimum acreage of a certain amount and have a certain setback. Uh, larger campgrounds, uh, campgrounds, more acreage, greater setback. I, I, you know, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there. I had a couple of ideas, but it, you know, it's just numbers I pulled out of the hat. And, um, what, what else? I think, uh, smokeless fire pits was mentioned by you, Brett. Um, annual CEO inspections and maybe a permit. Um, some other ideas, uh, quiet hours. RVs are a big issue. We noticed that with the Katie Wilderness that once RVs are out of the picture, not as many people were opposed. So, I mean, what do we want to do about RVs? Do we want to?
I would say no.
No RVs, period. No campgrounds with RVs. Is that what you're saying, Brett?
Really not. To me, there, that's an RV park, right? Really not. To me, there, that's an RV park, right? That's not like a campground. That's like a I, I don't know. I, I would be okay with that. I feel like the things are, they're just.
I disagree, but go ahead.
Is there a threshold of like, I mean, is RV referred to like anything that you're towing behind your car to sleep in?
Well, that's another good question. Okay, so if you have a, a, a car towing, a pop-up camper. That's much different than one of those Class A RVs that are, that with, uh, that they're like sixty feet long and.
And they're towing a, another trailer.
It's the same as having a tractor trailer.
So maybe there's some, you know, uh, length or axle size or weight, um, that we say no trailers larger than X. Or no vehicles that weigh, you know, the combined total of, of X.
It's a possibility, yeah. I, I don't know how that would work.
Just some more brainstorming to add to the list of like, things we could sort of look at. Um, one area is site selection and if there were some sort of more, which is sort of gets into the size question, but I think it's also like location and I'm not, we could have parameters about how much road frontage the property needed to have or what, you know, access to two roads or, you know, would be better than one or something that so that only, that would limit the number of possible places where campgrounds could, or the, the kind of places that campgrounds could be developed.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what you mean.
I guess I'm what, I, I'm hypothesizing that there are other than size of lot, there may be other characteristics of a lot that we could sort of use to specify which kinds of lots are appropriate, like ratio, where if we decided that we didn't want campgrounds in long, narrow lots, then you'd have to, have to have a certain ratio of length to width. I'm not sure if that would be an advantage, but I think it's maybe something worth considering.
Do you think we should limit the size of campgrounds? Like no campgrounds with more than X number of campsites?
Yeah, well, and there's a similar question, which is like, how many total sites in the town of Tremont? And that I thought was an interesting suggestion that maybe there's some carrying capacity or saturation point to our town. Where we determine sort of the way Bar Harbor just did with vacation rentals. Where we identify, oh, and probably I would put in like, that would be a useful way to use recreational lodging facilities. To say we want a maximum of at, you know, three hundred recreational lodging, like, you know, rooms or sites, spaces.
What do we have? So far, we have Bass Hopper Campground and Quiet Side Campground.
Correct. Those are the only two that are open.
That we have.
Yes.
Are there other places that would count as recreational lodging facilities?
Airbnbs, but I mean, some of those are, I think over in Seal Cove have some tent sites, but I don't.
Oh, Howling Woods.
Howling Woods, yes.
Yeah, I, yeah, they're, yeah, it's kind of a rustic sort of thing, uh. But most of the Airbnb rentals have, uh, would be residential dwelling units. I'm under that definition, I would guess.
All right.
I mean, I would think twice about, but not having a bathroom and, and kitchen facilities, or at least a bathroom.
Right, yeah.
So what do you think about categories?
Certainly, number of sites seems like it, it would make sense to treat a ten-site campground different than a hundred-site campground.
Right.
I don't think I would allow it. Someone mentioned earlier, number of sites. I don't know, it feels like fifty should be the limit. I don't know. I'm just throwing that number out there, but looking at the size of, of, um, Bass Harbor. And, um, the other one there, the Quiet Side, and then the one there that, uh, who knows what's gonna happen? And if you, you know, and there's, you know, in terms of density, if you say fifty sites and you say ten thousand square foot of site. If there's an automatic kind of limiting factor there, because you've automatically, you have to have a pretty good chunk of land. And there's not that many, like, I don't know how many chunks of land, but they're even available to do that. I mean, if you, if you increase the site size, you've, you've you know, you've created a, a limiting factor in terms of
Yeah.
Density.
That's true.
So I don't know. I, you know, fifty sites, no RVs, ten thousand square feet of site, seventy-five foot buffers, and we're done.
Let, let me point out something, because I wanted to discuss this. Right now, we have five thousand square feet per site. And I'm going to guess that board members are mostly thinking of these as squares or rectangles. That's not necessarily the case. For the, Jeff and I were on the board when the original Acadia Wilderness Lodge. The yurts, they were cabins then, uh, came before us. And, um, it was mentioned that at first they didn't have in their plans the five thousand square feet. And so then their engineer, Greg Johnston, came back with us uh, with drawings done on the computer, showing that they did have five thousand square feet per site. Now, these sites as he, as he, uh, these sites as he, he's proposed. If you remember, um, those of us old enough to remember drafting tools, uh, the French curve. Remember the French curves? They're very oddly shaped. Okay, well, these were more like something drawn with a French curve. Yes, it was five thousand square feet. We couldn't argue that. He met the criteria. He met the standard. But that's why they're so close together up there. So in thinking about how much per site, how much square footage per site, we need to really think about how we want to configure that site. At least I think so. Whether it's ten thousand square feet or whatever.
Related to that, Mark, is, are you including the non-buildable areas in your property? In that density? Right? So like, could your teardrop-shaped site extend over a wetland? Or over a rocky cliff or over a parking lot? Probably not a parking lot, because that would be clearly not a campsite, but like and, and so if you're drawing teardrops that go over non-buildable area, I think the way our ordinance is written right now, that's not super obvious, but one of the suggestions tonight was that we should exclude non-buildable spaces. In.
Well, our ministry now says says that land supporting wetland vegetation and land below the normal high water line of the water body shall not be included in calculating land area per site.
Oh, thanks, Brett. Great.
It already says that.
Which wetlands is that? We have forests and wetlands and we have wetlands. There's two types of wetlands.
It says land supporting wetland vegetation, vegetation, rather. It's not a defined term that I can.
I mean, not at least.
Or you could word it like, um, each unit has to, to sit on a five thousand square feet. Each unit has to have its own five thousand square feet measurement or whatever. Would eliminate a lot of space.
And I, I think Lawson, I think you mentioned this, um, about the, the, um, ties of the site. I think the setback really applies to the cabin or tent site itself and not necessarily the, um, five thousand square foot minimum for each site. If you look at, uh, page twenty-five of Land Use Ordinance D, Campgrounds, three. The area intended for placement of a recreational vehicle, tent or shelter, and utility and service buildings and accessory uses associated with camping activities such as fire pits, clotheslines and picnic tables, so be set back a minimum of fifty feet from the exterior lot lines. And it goes on to, uh, high waterline, all that stuff, but it doesn't really say that that whole five thousand square feet has to be set back from the fifty with, within fifty feet of the, the lot line.
Yep.
It's, it's getting late. Going a quarter to nine.
Yeah.
We, we know we're not gonna solve these things tonight. And it's gonna take a while. So I would suggest that we anybody that wants to ma- add something right now, please do it.
Well, yes, one question, this is our picking up on plan, I didn't Brett mention, or sorry, Jeff mentioned a couple meetings ago. If we're gonna start writing and revising draft ordinance language. I'm wondering if it would make sense for us to ask the select board for funding for a advisor, somebody who can help us write that language and write the definitions.
We, we have already made a motion and it was pa- passed by the board to do that.
Great. Sorry, I missed that. Okay.
Okay, the board. Did that go before the select board?
Did it or will it?
Did it? It was back.
I don't think it did, but I think it's going to.
Right, because that was a month ago, we passed that.
Yeah, I know.
And then I, it was a request earlier on that didn't get passed through.
I don't know what that, which one was that?
The one we amended the minutes to include my request, the meeting before that one. For a planner. Just review the minutes, you'll see it.
Okay. So what I was saying is, uh, unless somebody wants to discuss it, something right now, I think we should maybe call it a night. And, uh, think about, uh, making a motion to extend or, or ask selectmen to extend the moratorium.
Well, I just want to come back and address getting a planner involved and someone has expertise in this. Just for a simple example is that we've mentioned the word wetlands and our statute has at least three different types of wetlands. And so, and so we just need help going through, so we make sure we allocate the right wetlands to our this change we're thinking about putting in. And that's just an example of why we need a professional to take us through this. There's the old saying that, you know, a camel is a horse designed by a committee. We, we, we're trying our best efforts, but we need some professional guidance to.
I, I agree, Jeff. We've made that request and hopefully selectmen and, and I'll run it by our, uh, well, John's here tonight. Hopefully he'll pass it on again. John, do you know anything about that, our request? And what happened to it?
I do not.
Okay. John, I could, we can't understand you, John. You sound like an alien.
Was there ever a formal?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, John, you were at the meeting.
It's, it's in the minutes, sir.
It was formal and you were at the meeting, John.
I mean, a written piece of paper from the planning board requesting the selectman hire a planner the ordinance changes.
John, if I understood you, you're saying you need, uh, something written?
Yeah.
Well, I'll write something tomorrow and I'll, I'll send it right to, uh, the town manager. Then, okay? I know he knows.
That would be appropriate.
Okay. So, so we got that, okay? We already made the request. It's been voted on. Was somebody saying something?
Just coughing.
Just, okay. I hope you don't have COVID.
No, I've had COVID and I've been, no, I don't. I just have a cold.
Okay. Anybody else have any other input on this for tonight? Otherwise, I do want to say one thing, and I forgot to say it earlier. Regarding emails, and this is emails from the public to the board. We've been getting emails to our personal email and, um, the town has now set up uh, town emails for planning board members. So really, the, the thing, send them there and not to our home emails, please. Thank you. I'll take a, um, a motion if somebody wants to make that motion.
One other comment, Mark.
Yep.
I, I know the chat room wasn't supposed to be there. What's there? And a lot of our residents have made comments, I'm staring at them. They can be preserved and safe and circulated or packaged next time, so at least we can pick up some other comments that were made.
Okay, and also, um, while you say that, um, also, uh, any submissions from anybody regarding this? The Tuesday before our meeting, please, would be the deadline for submissions to be included in our packet. Thank you.
We probably should have done that before we adjourned our public hearing.
Well, we didn't, unfortunately.
I thought you did.
But I think all the people, most of the people are here anyway. And I'm sure word will get around quickly.
We've lost twenty people.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion regarding, uh, a recommendation to selectmen about extending a moratorium?
I move as a planning board, um, request the select board to extend the moratorium so we can continue working on the campground issues that are before us due to the moratorium that's presently in place. And extend it six months from the date of, I don't have the dates in front of me, so six months from the date, the present one expires.
On the expiration date.
Yeah.
The first one hundred eighty days, yeah.
I second that.
Okay, a motion and a second on the table to request selectmen to extend the moratorium for the additional six months. So that we continue, can continue working on campground standards. Good enough, Jeff?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
No.
The no vote, okay, uh. Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Uh, yes.
Less than enthusiastic, enthusiastic.
You know, I, 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 I do wonder if we need the first six months, but I guess it's gonna go to a vote. We ultimately need to go to a vote. Well, you know, I, 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 I do wonder if we need the first six months, but I guess it's gonna go to a vote. We ultimately need to go to a vote uh, with the, to the town with any, uh, you know, uh, proposal. So I, you know, I think we can get the language done. You know, if we can get a planner, you know, in two meetings, frankly. I heard a lot of good ideas tonight, um, but I, I just don't know how long it would take. So I think it'd be better to say, it would be better to say six months and unless, you know, unless it's, unless the changes are made sooner than, you know, made and approved sooner than that. That, in which case there'd be no need for the moratorium. But, um, you know, we could probably address that, um, I, I think the select board could address that if they wanted to.
Well, hold on, let me remind you that even if we arrive at something, it still requires the voters to approve of them.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. I, I know. That's what I'm saying. And I don't know how long that would take, so I.
Well, the 180 days, I think from January 30th, whatever it is, what would that be? I think it's in May sometime or, or, or maybe, uh, yeah, I, I don't know, but probably the earliest that anybody's gonna vote on is the May town meeting.
Yeah, it takes us to the May town meeting, advantage of it. So the voters can ultimately have the say of how we conclude.
They always do, yes. Yeah, okay. Okay. Now, now that you guys have me totally confused, we have Beth no, Jeff yes, Lawson yes, and, um, and, and, um, Brett yes, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and myself, yes. Okay, so it's four to one. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Otherwise? Yep, yep.
Mark?
Yes.
We, we had our requests for someone to help us through this process, fall through the cracks. Um, uh, because it wasn't written, which we haven't had to do in the past. Jesse always passed everything along when he was CEO. Um, can we, can you be sure that at least these two items are extremely important to this board get before the select board at their next meeting?
Jeff, I promise you that tomorrow I'm going to write, I'll write both those things and send it to Jesse.
Thank you.
So the selectmen will have it, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Now, if you see, check the abyss tomorrow. If I'm not around, maybe somebody else ought to follow through, okay?
But the paper doesn't come out until Thursday, Mark. What are we gonna do?
Okay, good enough.
Late night, dark humor.
What's that?
It's a dark humor for a late night.
Yeah, I know, I. Well, you know, I just had a birthday. I'm getting pretty old, so you never know. I take it a day at a time. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn unless somebody has anything else to say.
So moved. I'll second Jeff's motion.
Okay, most of the second on the table to adjourn. I'm sure there's no discussion. Jeff?
Do we just, do we need to set the next date?
Oh, yeah, we should do that. Yeah, I, I misplaced my. Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. Let's do that first. That's, uh, actually, it's not even on you. January 25th, 6 o'clock.
I'll move that we schedule our next meeting for January 25th, 6 o'clock by Zoom due to concerns around, uh, COVID and the overcon variant.
Second.
Motion, the second on the table to, uh, schedule our next meeting for January 25th at 6 o'clock by Zoom. Any discussion? Hearing none, a call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, now let's go on to adjournment. Uh, we did have a motion and a second, so I'll take a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Okay, myself, yes. Thanks, folks, for bearing with us tonight. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, bye.